Yeah, come over. Needs to balance, symmetry.
Yes, we can.
Oh, it's cold. Very cold.
You're gonna confuse everybody now, you know that.
Keep them on their toes.
So, here we just said, I'm trying to get their signs.
Right, Robin, your chair is much nicer than mine. I get like the rookie seat.
I'm a deputy, what do you expect?
This is actually the only old chair, these are all new.
Yeah, but that's a cushy one. It's heated, too.
I was just gonna say it's exceedingly cold right now. All right. You ready? Madam Clerk, you ready?
Yes.
Okay, it is 7:04 and I hereby call to order the October 2015 meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. Thank you all very much for being here tonight. Will you please join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We'll begin with a Clerk's Report.
The Clerk's Office sold 558 trash bags. We attended a planning meeting and workshop and a public hearing. We continue to collect water and sewer bills. We processed two payrolls. We have a holiday coming up on November 11th for Veterans Day and you have a workshop date change.
That's correct. So because our regular second Wednesday workshop would fall on Veterans Day, it will be held the following day, Thursday, the 12th at 7:00 PM. And does that conclude your report?
Yes.
I would like to announce an event coming up. I'm gonna dash into the hallway to get the poster, because that's a very good. Suspenseful moment. The Village Green Committee put in for and received 1,500 free flower bulbs. And those are daffodils, hyacinths, and allium. And so on October 31st, Halloween morning, it's a Saturday, 10:00 AM, help us plant 1,000 spring bulbs in Tivoli. We're gonna meet up at the Welcome to Tivoli sign by Monument Hill. Meet at the Memorial Hill by the Welcome to Tivoli sign. Bring your friends, kids, and neighbors. Come with shovels and gloves, we need your help. And the idea here is that we'll plant our bulbs and in the spring, after what'll surely be a gray, long, too-long winter, and we drive into the village, we can have some nice bursts of color as you come in. So it should be a really fun day. I would love to get a lot of children there. And again, Halloween morning, the 31st, 10:00 AM, up by the Welcome to Tivoli sign. And we'll see how far we get that morning. But congratulations to the Green Committee. They've been doing really great and I hope people will come to that event. Okay. Approving minutes. You've all had a chance to read the minutes. We have regular board meeting minutes from September 16th and last week's public hearing minutes from October 14th. At this time, is there a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Oh, yes, a second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. And the minutes are accepted. Treasurers' Report, please.
Yes, in the General Fund, we spent $40,679.77. In the Water Fund, it was $4,434.71. The Sewer Fund, it was $1,812.55. The Capital Fund was $228.89. And the Expendable Trust was $112, per total of $47,267.92.
Thank you very much. At this time, is there a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The report is accepted. Payment of the bills, is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Zoning Report. Sorry, it was a little frantic at the beginning, you may notice we're down two trustees tonight. Trustee Schneider and trustee Azrati could not join us tonight. So as others try and handle their material, please bear with us. Zoning Report, Village of Tivoli, from September 21st to October 21st. Let's see, we had permit for a footing foundation, placement of 1,000 square foot garage to replace, the garage was demolished on a permit, renovation of an interior including plumbing, electrical, drywall siding, and commercial other re-roof with soffits. I think that's Marty Clark, you'll see over the town crier there. He's got some scaffolding up. He's been working his way around the building, it's gonna look nice. Some property, three property registrations. Let's see, is this landlord agent? Yeah, so these are people complying with our landlord agent registration. We've been trying to sort of go through the list and make sure that everyone who is obligated to have an agent has one, so we've got three more that we're taking care of. Remove existing fireplace, insert and replace with a new wood-burning stove. And I don't see any complaints addressed in this, but I also could be missing that. It's wrong. But I don't see any. So we'll conclude that zoning report. Clerk Canella, did we have any correspondence this month?
No.
Thank you. Moving on to public comment on agenda items. I'm gonna explain this quickly. There's a bit of redundancy or pairing anyway. The first two and the number four and five kind of go together. So one of the things we're doing tonight is approving an application for a community development block grant. And the purpose of that is to build a proper shoulder and begin improvements of Pine Street. So where we have the bus stop there. The idea, and you've seen it, get deteriorated, potholed. It's a lot to have those two buses. So the application is to make a proper shoulder so the buses can get out of the lane. And then hopefully there will be a phase two to that later, but we have to do phase one. Phase two, the Board would like to see a new sidewalk along there and drainage improvements. But we were certainly dreaming of more than we can achieve with that $150,000 county grant. Number three. We need to switch our health insurance broker and health insurance plan. So the plan that we had been on for our village employees was shooting up about 17% in price. So that's always a good time to shop around. We shopped around, we found a very comparable plan, which is only going up about 5%. And that is a plan that we would get through a different insurance broker. So that's what number three is about. And the other thing I'm very excited about tonight is we will be naming a new designated engineering firm. As you know, we stopped doing business with Morrison Associates a couple months ago and we did a full and exhaustive request for proposals over the last two months. I want to thank every firm who submitted a proposal. We had 13 firms, many from Columbia County, Dutchess County, as far away as Rockland, Westchester. So it was nice to have that much competition over the Tivoli account. We read 13 proposals, we interviewed four. And tonight, we would like to announce that we would be awarding that role to Crawford and Associates, who you all may remember, they've worked in the village of Tivoli for about 20 years. So are there any public comments on the agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to business. So counsel, should we just do number two, or?
Yeah, I mean, you sort of already addressed some of my questions.
Okay. So we've had our discussion. We have a resolution in our book somewhere. Do we have a resolution number for that, Clerk Canella? Resolution 22. There we are. A resolution authorizing the submission of the fiscal year 2016 Dutchess County Community Development Block Grant application. This is in the amount of $150,000. And we're calling out Pine Street Improvement Project. At this time, is there a motion to authorize the submission?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Good luck, as I always like to say. Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Would you like a roll call on that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Bruno?
Aye.
Trustee Major?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. And the resolution passes. Approval of new health insurance broker and health insurance plan. And that's just gonna be by motion? Right, there's no resolution for that, so. Is there a motion to approve the new health insurance broker and health insurance plan? That's an MVP plan we're switching to.
I move.
Motion was made by trustee Major, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And so again, four and five are sort of related, we'll do the resolution. Authorizing the execution of agreement for engineering services with Crawford and Associates. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, vote, Deputy Mayor Bruno?
Aye.
Trustee Major?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Resolution carries. I'd like to welcome Crawford and Associates back to the village of Tivoli. We look forward to working with you and we have a long list. So we will be seeing them early next week and we're gonna start getting to work on things around here. I would like to thank the Review Committee for participating in that process. That was myself, Deputy Mayor Bruno, and former mayor Tom Cordier. And again, thanks to all the engineers who submitted proposals and allowed us to have a very vigorous search. The next board meeting will be held on Wednesday, November 18th at 7:00 PM, preceded by a workshop at 6:00 PM here at the historic Washtepaister Hall. Again, our regular workshop. Pay attention here, it's on Thursday, November 12th, not Wednesday, November 11th, that being Veterans Day, at 7:00 PM. Committee reports, Deputy Mayor Bruno.
Okay, I've got a few things here. And one, which is an upcoming event, the Rec. Committee will be piggybacking on with the Tivoli Freey Library this weekend, October 24th, on Saturday. 10:30 to 12:00, the library has a children's program, Dia de los Muertos, the Dead. They'll be having decorating, skull sugar cookies, making a cascarone, and they'll have interactive Mexican folkloric dance demonstrations. So this is gonna be quite a program for the kids. And during this portion, Santa Fe has so graciously donated chips and salsa. So they'll have that. And then following this event, hoping that we can have it outside, whether permitting, Rec. Committee will have a Halloween costume contest. We've got four judges that'll be here. We've got prizes that have been donated from Oblong Books in Reinbeck and Little Pickles, a little store, it's a kid's store, like, you know, the old kinds of candy. It's really cute. Little Pickles and Red Hook. So we'll have the judges there, they're going to pick different categories for all the appropriate, for all the costumes. And two, once they complete that, the kids that are here can participate trick-or-treating up and down Broadway. So we'll have a costume, yes. It's going to be a parade, but they'll be visiting local, no, just local businesses. So the library, Tivoli General, Gary De Moro's Real Estate, Broadway Pizza, Murray's, and The Corner have all willingly chosen to participate. So they'll have treats for the kids so they can trick-or-treat up and down Broadway.
What time is the costume contest?
About 1:00 o'clock, 1:00 o'clock. So it'll be right, because the, yes, the library program will run 10:30 to 12:00, so we'll get them out there and get the parade out, get everyone situated, attend to costumes on. So I think that'll be, you know, cute and a whole lot of fun. For the park, the facilities will be closed next week prior to Halloween. The tables will be taken in and set aside and the facilities will be winterized. Upcoming Veterans Day, November 11th, 11:00 AM, Monument Hill. There will be the usual Veterans Day ceremony. You can come and pay your respects to our veterans that will attend and also to those who had made the ultimate sacrifice. It's usually 11:11 at 11:00, November 11th at 11:00, Monument Hill. And Winterfest, we've already started to plan that, Saturday, December 12th, 2:30 to 4:30. And that again, will be in conjunction with a library event. They're going to have an author event and a signing. Horse and carriage rides, coloring books, candy canes, arts and crafts, music, card-making, tree lighting. We will be having a craft fair. And we were fortunate enough to really get a hold of Santa Claus early and he will be making a visit.
His beard is growing.
It is. It is. And he's been drinking a lot of hot chocolate from what I hear. Just from a few wells. And I think it doesn't hurt.
Okay. Trustee Azrati is obviously not with us this evening, so I'll be reading the water report. Every month, there are two samples taken and the microbiological sample results came back with no violations. Always pleased to see that. Comments and remarks, water main break at 44 Woods Road on September 3rd. Water main break at 32 Woods Road on September 9th. And if you put all these water reports together and the one that's coming next month, we have had eight water main breaks on Woods Road since July.
Lot of trucks.
Lot of trucks, good point. And trustee Schneider's not here, you wanna take a crack at the court report? Trustee Major?
Is it just the charges?
Yeah, your charges, charges received, charges disposed, and then read the fines. And the period, there you go.
Okay, so there were, from the period of September 1st through September 30th, there were seven charges received, four charges disposed, and fines and surcharges collected and remitted to the state comptroller in the amount of $338.
Thank you. Trustee Major, and if you'd like to continue with your regular reports, please do.
So much today. So the library has applied for a Rotary Club grant to fund a Girls Makers Club and they're looking for role models to sort of be mentors in the STEM fields, which is to say, science, technology, engineering, and math. Also, November is National Novel Writing Month. There are gonna be workshops for both teens and adults. And the library continues with their usual fabulous programs, like the Lego Club, the Teen Geek Program, the Knitters and Rughookers, every Thursday from 10:00 to 2:00. And with the partnership programs with Bard Students, Bard Students and local kids, there are workshops in art and science and math. Claremont State Park has two things going on right now. There is a site-specific sculpture exhibit called Potential Fields and that'll be up, I believe, until the end of November. And the Legends by Candlelight Ghost Tours finish up this Friday, Saturday night, that's from 6:00 to 9:00. It is a $10 charge for adults, $5 for children. And you are encouraged to register by phone at 518-537-4240. Also, this weekend, there's an Andrew Jackson Downing Symposium at Marist College. And this is to celebrate the 200th anniversary of the birth of the father of American landscape architecture. And locally, some of his designs from the mid-1800s can be seen at Montgomery Place. Also, November 7th is the Red Hook Chocolate Festival, which is gonna be a town-wide event. You can come, you can race your skateboard, you can eat chocolate in all sorts of locations. And you could come to the El Maturo Inn to learn more about the history of the chocolate industry in Red Hook. So that's between 11:00 and 5:00, November 7th. And finally, it is hunting season, so when you're out in the bays, be sure to wear your safety orange. It is squirrel, rabbit, turkey, pheasant, and deer season by boat.
Deer season starts Saturday.
So maybe stay out of the bays for a couple days.
I would advise you to stay out of there.
Right. So that's it.
Thank you, trustee Major. Let's see. So Broadway striping update. As you know, the county came and they started to pave the worst stretch of Broadway from the laundromat down to the bridge. They milled it down, that was great, they started paving, that was great. And then they ran into a couple snags, as often is the case. Those were storm pipes that had collapsed. So they had to pull the paving crew off, line up the piping crew. They came back. That's why for so long there was that one lane. They got the new pipes in and they repaved. They found one more sinkhole that appeared. That's been now addressed. Then they came in with a contractor last week at 11:00, 11:30 at night and started striping. They did not manage to get the parked cars off the shoulders of the road. So you see the yellow stripe, you don't see the white stripes. I'm pleased to say, I got to speak with county executive and he promptly called the right people at County DPW. And today, I met with them. They have marked where those white lines are gonna be, where all the crosshatching is gonna be. And they'll be coming back soon. And this time, the whole area will be coned and barreled so that there will not be any parked cars in that stretch. So if you live there and park there, please excuse us, but you'll have to park somewhere else. And we're gonna have 10-foot lanes coming through with the white stripes, which also defines the parking along there. And then crosshatching, sort of between lower about 44 Broadway to the bridge, like there used to be a decade ago before it started to fade. And also, we want to thank the county for striping over by the firehouse. So we appreciate everyone's patience, they do as well. But all in all, I'm personally grateful as mayor and I hope we all will be as residents, if the county got here, it's gonna be done before the snow flies. And that's a nice thing, so. The water study, as you know, we are a month into our six-month study evaluation of the water and sewer systems. This morning, we had a four-hour meeting with no breaks, it was a very long workshop, I have to say, with Ty and Bond, Aaron Moore from that firm that we hired. And we definitely hired the right firm, this firm is on top of it and the product is gonna be very detailed, very good. Today was a presentation of the priority segment. They opened every manhole cover in the sewer system, thorough examination of the treatment plant and the pump house. Those are the elements of the sewer system. And on the water system, they visited every well, every wellhouse, the water tower. And today was showing us what they found. And as we are well aware, and we're gonna be hearing a lot more about this, there are a lot of things that are old and broken and need to get fixed. So what we're gonna end up with in the end of December is a very detailed study of not only what needs to get fixed, but what do you fix first? What should have been fixed yesterday? What has, and the other categories are between, you know, now and five years, five to 10 years, and 10 years or greater. A very nice aspect of these update meetings is that we have put together a citizen committee who is sitting in on those meetings, so it's not just the mayor, a trustee, and the engineer. There's more representation. And I want to thank the people who are participating in that capacity. That's former trustee Pat Hogan from Montgomery Street, Marty Clark, who I think has at least four water bills around the Four Corners area, Angela Cole of North Road, and Glenn Baker from over there. And it's good to have residents there to sort of kick the tires on this product. The engineer was asking for a lot of feedback from them. I think all of them found, you know, ask them when you see them, they'll speak for themselves, but I think all of them found it very interesting. Eye-opening, a reality check. So the process is underway, it's going very well, the engineer is right on schedule to where they want to be. And the next pieces, there will be another update, I was told today, it'll be about six weeks from now. And that's when they're gonna get into the financials of the price tag for all these improvements. And at the end of it, again, Dutchess County gave Tivoli this $80,000 grant to do this evaluation to permit residents of this village, all the users of these systems, water system, sewer system, they belong to you, to decide whether Tivoli wants to keep them or transfer them to the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. And there'll be a lot more about that coming up. But whichever route we all decide to go as a village, we are gonna have this document, it's gonna be a blueprint, a roadmap, so it'll let us get started fixing it ourselves if we choose that. Or if we hand it to the water authority, they're gonna know what to do, when. So I think compared to the sort of limbo we've been in in recent years, where we know we've got water main breaks, we know we have a 77-year-old system, this is a good position to be getting into, so. Again, daffodils on Halloween morning, 10:00 o'clock. And also, the Green Committee has organized a purchase of four new trees that'll be coming to fill in some of the spots in the sidewalks where the trees are absent. Looking forward to that, they should come early November. And about a year ago, four a year, the three municipalities, Village of Red Hook, Village of Tivoli, and Town of Red Hook were in a county-funded shared services grant looking at the three highway departments. Of course, we don't, in Tivoli, one of the first things they discovered is, we don't have a highway department, we have a Department of Public Works. So it's not apples to apples, but you'll remember that grant. And phase one, which was concluded in July, took a good look at the three municipalities, how their departments are structured, how many personnel they have, and began an inventory of how many backhoes, weed whackers, lawn mowers, how old are they, all that sort of thing. One of the things they found out was that the data capture was so scant, it was hard to actually do a real analysis. The three municipalities applied for a second grant in July. And Supervisor Sue Crane, who, from the town, who led the first one, said, "I'm not doing the second one." So it was up to myself and Mayor Blundell, and I want to thank Ed. Three municipalities were awarded this grant. So we won the second grant, phase two, in the amount of $81,250. And this grant, if awarded, funds would be used to hire temporary support for assistance with business process redesign with inventory of remaining assets, including roadway, streets, drainage signs, lights, trees, water, plant, distribution system, storage, et cetera, parks, meaning land, buildings, equipment, et cetera, assets. Funds, if awarded, would also be used for a one-year salary and fringe benefits for a data entry clerk required to implement shared administration and data collection. So the idea is they catalog every asset in the three municipalities. They have some, you know, cutting-edge software and they hire a person to put all that information in there. And the idea is that the three municipalities can look forward and say, gee, do all three of us need to buy a dump truck in the same year? Maybe we need to. It'll let us do much more effective and detailed capital planning. And that's where the savings come in, because maybe all three municipalities don't have to run out and buy three backhoes the same year. And the projected savings, projected, are $60,000 spread across the three municipalities. So congratulations to the town and the two villages for winning this grant. Thank you to the county for funding it. And I will let you know when phase two is really underway. The grant announcements were made since our last board meeting a couple weeks ago. And that is what I have. Is there any other business before the board? Don't think so. And at this time, is there a motion to take public comments on any topic you choose? We don't really do a motion for that, right? We just open up, we open the floor to public comment. Yes, ma'am?
This is almost two years I came in and spoke with Mayor Cranna. It was a year ago, last April or something. And concerning the people who have acreage of five acres, up to 18 acres in the village, where even if you're in one or two or three acres, you're not allowed to have... where even if you're in one or two or three acres, you're not allowed to have a, an apartment dwelling, which is so grossly off-the-charts different from every village around us. And I understand, I guess these laws are from nineteen sixty-nine. I'm not clear whether or not it was really changed in twenty-twelve or not. But Susan Isrodi was supposed to get back to me the end of last year. And, you know, it's just not important for anybody else except for the people who are, you know, have the land where, you know, families, if you want to be, to, to hold on to the land and not subdivide. And, I mean, I had to subdivide my land and it was so wrong to make me do that. But in my, in my mind, to be able to have seven point three acres and have an apartment and a small house, it's so reasonable. And I really don't understand who I'm supposed to be talking to because it doesn't go anywhere other than the fact that, you know, I have spoken with the zoning men and they told me that I could offer to pay to change the law. But it really doesn't get what you guys want, which I understand that you want more families and you don't want more barred students. But frankly, I mean, I've been a landlord and I'm very responsible. I've lived in the village for, you know, thirty years. And the taxes, when you have situations today where the majority of people, families, don't stay together, it makes it very difficult for one adult to pay, to pay the taxes. I'm sorry that I'm upset about this, but I've been trying to get through to somebody for years now and you guys don't really listen. And it's okay, but I'm sorry that it's emotional for me because I really don't wanna have to move. I've been here a long time. And I don't think what I'm asking is unreasonable. And I feel like when you guys told me that I had to subdivide my land and I listened to you that I should have, you know, maybe hired a lawyer then, but I'm not a person who really wants to make waves. It's just that you guys are, even when I talk to the zoning guys, Fennell and Cole, they both tell me that Tivoli is unlike any other village. And it's really unreasonable considering the monies that we have to come up with for taxes. I'm sorry I got upset about it, but I haven't gotten nowhere with this. And it's fine, I mean, I will have to sell my house down the road and be like other women who don't have a husband to help out. You know, and you guys, it's not right. Especially when the zoning is two acres or fifteen hundred square feet. And, you know, it's a, it's a big piece of land, there's a lot of girth between you and your neighbor and you're there. And you're not gonna have fly-by-night nasty people who are loud or obnoxious, you know. You, you know how to be a good neighbor and it's just wrong. It's not like the other villages. And it's just unreasonable. I don't know what else to say because this is really the last time I'm gonna bring this up because I'm not gonna be like a broken record with you people. I've spoken with Susan Isrodi, you know, whatever. Maybe you can give me a good answer. I don't really feel like, you know, I haven't been a person who's been on any of these boards. You know, I was busy raising kids or using, in my own world. But, you know, this is, it's really, it's, it's not reasonable. I talked to other people who own houses. I know around here in Duchess County, we pay our taxes, I know that. But, you know, when you've got divorce and things like that, and you really do want people who are in the community, who care about this place, you know, not, when you have over seven acres and two-acre zoning, it's just, it's not, it doesn't make sense. You're, we're not like other villages. I understand when you, most of these folks like in front of me here and you guys, you live in the village, you live close to one another. I don't, you know, I've got a lot of land. Why can't I make a barn into apartment? Why couldn't I have made my studio and kept my house? You know? You're just really off the charts unreasonable. I'm sorry, I don't know why, maybe there's a lot of other people who don't have these things or they just go, I know there's other lots that have less land than me that have apartments and they just do it, you know. I don't wanna be like that. I don't wanna have to be looking over my, my back to think that I'm not doing something that's legal, you know?
So may I respond? Thank you for coming and speaking to us. Clearly, it's very sensitive and I apologize for that. I don't know if you wanna discuss some aspects of this now, here?
It's fine, you can tell me anything. I, I mean, I, nobody, you know, I, people would just say, oh, do it by the end of the year, oh, we've got other things going on.
Right, okay, so I'd like to talk if I may. So what you would like to do on your property is, is against current zoning, right? That's the issue.
I, well, I had a little house and I had to subdivide my, sell my freaking house to hold on to the land, you know, and put in new lines and all this crap.
Right, but I'm trying to focus it in so we can talk about the matter at hand.
Yeah, I wanna make a barn into an apartment to help offset the cost of, of taxes, yeah.
Right, so.
But also to have, you know, to have someone else there and.
And doing that on the parcel that you have configured as it is, is against current zoning, correct? So can't you approach the zoning board of appeals and make your case? I mean, that's what the ZBA exists for, it's for times like that. I mean, that, that's the, the route by which someone in your position
It's, it's, it's very.
Goes where they wanna go.
It's very hard to do that, you know, I did it already. I don't want to go through all that.
You, you did go to the ZBA?
No, I mean, I had, when I had to make it a flag lot and, and sell my front house and, you know, I just don't have the energy to do all of that stuff. I mean, you have to understand, there's not that many people that have, you know, five to eighteen acres in town.
Right, exactly.
Some of them are really wealthy and they don't care.
Well, exactly why, in your situation, because your, your parcel is quite unique in the village.
Well, I mean, there's probably about ten of us. Ten, ten to eighteen, ten, ten or twelve of us.
Your parcel's unique in that you have a significant acreage, seven point three, but of course, it is a flag lot.
I used to have seven point three, now I have six point.
You also have a flag lot with the, you know, the
Right.
Skinny stem comes down to the road access and the frontage is what limits you. Because your road frontage, while your property's very large in the back, it's very small in the, in the frontage, right?
Smaller now than it was.
Right, well, one has to work with the position you're in today, right? We can't go back in time.
No.
Right, so I'm trying to suggest that given, you know, zoning is there in general to sort of characterize the village and protect the general desire. Let me finish, please. And then, seriously, I mean, if, if I can't talk to you, then we can't talk.
No, I, but I know these things.
So the zoning is there, and I'm trying to suggest to you that the ZBA is there for the well-considered exception, which is what you could be.
I just know how much energy it took to do the last thing, which I feel.
So then what can we do? We can't wave a wand and make things happen, I mean, there are processes.
There, what I'm saying is, is this village needs to be more like Red Hook and the other villages in being reasonable. I'm not talking about, you know, squishing in an apartment in, you know, a fifteen hundred square foot block. I'm talking, when you have in two-acre zoning, two-acre zoning is two-acre zoning. And we don't seem to abide by it, you know? Because that means that every two acres, you're allowed to have a, a structure. And I'm not even talking about, you could say that you just want with every parcel, you're allowed to have one apartment dwelling, you know? You know what I mean?
What I know is if you want to address a specific real situation, I mean, we can, we can go around about, you know, how things ought to be. But addressing a problem, finding a solution is about what is.
The law should be changed. The law needs to be changed. Because it isn't just about me, it's about some other people, ten of us or so.
Well, you're the only person we're hearing from.
Well, I know other people, but the people, I'm, I'm not gonna, I don't wanna like name names or do things that are gonna make me feel like I'm divulging, because I don't, other people have different thresholds of what they wanna do.
I appreciate it can be.
I wanna be legal when I have an apartment and not feel like I have to worry, you know, about things.
Well, so if it's, if it's a specific thing where you want to make an apartment in your barn, then, then the route forward is to go to the ZBA and apply for a variance. And that might get you a much faster solution than, than changing laws.
Which we may not wanna change.
Are my neighbors gonna want that? I mean, you know.
Well, if you go for a variance, your neighbors will have an opportunity to speak about it.
So I just go to the ZBA and I say that I wanna do this and, and that's?
And that's where the process starts. And then, I mean, you know, that's where you get a thing called a variance, which lets you do something in a, you know, one-time situation in a specific place that is contrary to the, the zoning law as it exists. But, so, you know, the zoning law is even steven, it's, it's the same everywhere. But the reason communities have a zoning board of appeals is because in reality, not every parcel's the same. Every applicant's needs are the same. And it is a place where a community can have reasonableness and judgment. That's where it happens for someone in your situation.
But I feel like I have been going on about this for almost two years. And you say that, but then other people say, like the zoning guys tell me, oh, you've gotta get them to change the law. You know? Offer to give them the seven thousand dollars to change the law. And it's like, you know.
Well, I, if, if that's what you were told, I would disagree with that. Because it's seven thousand dollars and because they don't have any power to change the law. I mean, residents have a recourse, which is the zoning board of appeals.
You guys have the power to look at this and say, you know what? Why are we?
We do, that's correct.
Why aren't we allowing people who have a decent chunk of land to have an apartment dwelling? Like other villages around us, you know?
You know, I don't know. You know, that was another time when the law was written that way, when the zoning was put in place. I mean, I can research it, but I'm telling you, it would be, I think, as trustee major suggests, more direct and easier to go to the ZBA. You know, we may do research and decide that we don't wanna change the law. But you have a route regardless of the law being the way it is or being changed, which is a variance. And I don't know whether you can get one or not, but I know where you can get that question answered, which is before the zoning board of appeals. I, I appreciate it's a headache to go before those boards, I've gone through them myself and, but that is how it's done, I'm sorry.
So, okay, so I go to the zoning board of appeals and ask for a variance. And then what? If I get it?
You get on their agenda, they have you in, they do a workshop and they learn the facts of your case. They learn what you're asking. And then they go off and they look at the zoning law. And then they make a judgment. And they say, well, maybe this is actually quite reasonable what she's asking. Maybe if she did X, Y and Z, we can make this work. But they take your particular case, look at its particulars and, and address it. We happen to have a member of the ZBA here, I don't know if I could have you talk.
And a hearing to hear from the neighbors too.
Could I invite you to talk a bit about the ZBA and what they do?
Well, I, she's been before, the board before.
Yeah, for the other stuff.
Right, so.
And it's a lot of energy and money and time, I mean, it's just.
Well, to make those changes, it's gonna be there. And you do have to, to go to the zoning enforcement officer first to do the paperwork, to have him deny it, then it comes to us for the variance.
Also, I don't know the particulars of this site, but you do have to consider whether it's a use variance or an area variance. And an area variance is a lot different standard than a use variance. It depends on.
And which one is harder to?
A use variance is harder to get, right. Because there are a different level of requirements to be granted.
And not granted.
So it depends on what.
So if the issue is road frontage on a parcel, that's a area, which is the easier kind of.
And I don't know if that's the only issue, so I, I wouldn't wanna prejudge any particular situation.
I mean, originally, what I wanted to do.
But I don't really wanna, I'm sorry. You know, I don't, I don't wanna get into particulars on this matter, certainly not before this board. I think that if you're suggesting that the ZBA is a route, certainly that's a discussion that she can have with the, with the
Zoning officer.
Building office and, and the chair. But, you know, you can also listen to the request for, you know, having your zoning review committee look at this issue in general.
You need to look at it because there are other people, maybe they don't come forth like I do, but they haven't been pushed to this point, but they will be. And, you know, there are people out there who are single women or, or, or just people who are not with the family anymore, who want to stay in the town, who want to stay in their home, but need to have some other help. And we're talking in, we follow the, we're in the protocol of two acre or one acre. We've got, we've got a chunk of land. And we're within those limits of zoning and yet, we're not allowed to do that. And we're not, and, and it's not something that is, we're not talking about putting in a three-room house where you're gonna have.
But these details, these, these differences you're drawing.
These are very reasonable things and other villages around us allow it. And we're just off the charts not, and, and really, it is a, a law that you need to look at and, and to change. I know most of you people live close to one another here, but it's not the same for everybody.
Well, I think the board can certainly look at the law as written. And I do recommend to you that the ZBA is, is the route to specifically pursue what, what you're trying to do. And, and I think with that, I'd like to see if there are other comments from the public. Mr. Christie?
Just a couple of quick things, fire-wise. We've had some AFA calls, some auto accident calls. So if you heard the sirens, that's what it was all about.
I'm sorry, AFA?
Yeah, AFA, one of my fire alarms.
Gotcha.
Okay, Bard College or Provost Park and stuff like that, we've had a couple of calls. Other than that, as far as firehouse goes, that's it. I think it's not much, you know, like you said, we got the striping done. Seems that nobody's turning on the ramp now that the stripes are there. I don't know why the stripes are stopping, but it's working. Other than that, that's it. But then I wanna go on to personal, just so that's on the record and you know where I'm going. Couple of Saturdays ago, Friday, Saturday night, seemed that some, don't know who they were, can't blame anybody, but flagpole got up out of its hole and was taking two doors down to another house and dropped on, on their lawn. I filed criminal mischief charges. Until I find out who the person was or kids were, whoever they were, there's not much I can do, but I know the police can't be everywhere all the time. But I, I think we gotta start looking at where the majority of these kids are, parties are happening or whatever, that's where they should be patrolling. It's just that, you know, for them to go patrol down by the river and there's nothing down there, you know, it, it seems like it's a waste of resources. It's like the third time now, it's enough is enough. So that's basically, I just wanted on the record. You know, I've been trying to find out who it is and I just can't. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Glee?
Just a couple of things. They got the stripes up here, we're gonna do a fairway avenue. You're gonna get a one-way up there?
Yes.
Nobody sign?
Uh, it's gonna be painting on the roadbed.
On county road and the, the Stone Street?
In the village street. There'll be an arrow and a one-way.
They've used probably a road on the street sign too for one-way.
Well, you know, I looked at it a while ago and the one-way sign, I mean, they're pretty big. They're eighteen by twenty-four and having that on the sidewalk actually.
They'll get a banner between this one and that.
I mean, we can look at it, but there's some consideration of how big does a sign need to actually be to be legitimate? And then if they're getting that big, it's like, it's too big a sign on the sidewalk to not have people.
So they've been getting larger than the sign.
Because that, that garbage truck is still coming out.
Yeah, I had to stop, let them out.
Is he able to turn in off of Broadway to go down?
He comes in with Gumby Street now.
Yeah, well, it's probably.
We'll just straight across sometime.
It's probably easier to turn in.
It's probably easier to turn in that way than it is off of Broadway, I mean, 'cause I'm, just talking even fire truck wise, that's a short, that's a real tight turn for a fire truck to get down.
Right, still doesn't mean that garbage trucks should be going the wrong way, so when that happens again, dude, take a license and call them.
The car park in the yellow zone, and that truck, he has to actually back up into animals.
Yeah, we've been trying to keep up with the yellow paint there and paint those, but of course.
Maybe you need to stripe that too.
Maybe.
Stripes for everything.
We are gonna get the one-way and the arrow put in.
Garbage cans are just everywhere.
The only issue, maybe not on Washington Avenue, but.
It's 'cause they push them out of the way. Being left out all week, being on the sidewalk, that's the issue.
Johnny DeVinci's house, three Gallaghers, who I don't own, sit down by the church.
Just before the church.
There's a couple mattresses and a pile of junk that have been out there for two months.
I had the enforcement officer look at that particular address today, yeah, it's been there too long.
Can we clean up today?
Hey, we're gonna clean up today in spring. Help me get these daffodils on, Dave, and we'll talk about that.
I think that daffodil bulbs are wonderful, there's nothing nice than driving through Hyde Park when the daffodils are out, because all their stone walls, for I don't know how far, at least a mile or more, cut our wall out and blossom, and you know they had to be planted, so that was a community effort, had to be.
That was a community beautification committee.
And it looks beautiful, and I think that this will be, you know.
Well, we're gonna get started, so.
Good.
Are there any other comments from the public? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, it is 7:55, we are adjourned, thank you very much.